Dan, I'll give him 10 seconds to let him start the record and then we'll get started.
You're good.
All right. Well, let's bring this, call this meeting into order. Today is February 12th and this is our 10 a.m. State Board of Education meeting for February. Welcome to everyone. Hope everyone's staying safe and warm. Looks like most everyone is, there's a lot of people at home and there's looks like some people at the offices as well, but I'm glad everyone is on today. Dr. Fitzheal is being super dad today, so he's not going to be able to join us. He's on the road to go see Juice play, so. We wish him well on these roles and hope he stays safe. So we're going to get started with our moment of silence, if you would. Just going to take a few moments to send our thoughts and our minds around this meeting and why we are on this board and why we do what we do. And it is for the children and the students of Arkansas. So we'll just take a few moments and have a moment of silence. All right. Next up, do we have any changes to the agenda? Oh, yes. Yes, sir. Mr. Commissioner Key, if you would call the role since we don't have an attended sheet.
All right. Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Dean?
Here.
Ms. Newton?
Here.
Ms. Chambers?
Here.
Ms. McFetrich?
Here.
Mr. Sutton?
Here.
Ms. Woods?
Here.
Dr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Lookadoo?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, then we will move on to the we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have any questions or items that need to be pulled?
I just had one quick question.
Okay, Ms. Newton?
It was concerning the PLSB items. I don't know if Ms. Saracini is on or not, but we had, there was two items that were very, very similar, but they had different consequences. There were a few differences in them, but we have discussed in the past about having some training as far as some guidance and training for the members that were making the decisions about maybe doing some standard setting and different things. I was just wondering how that progress was going on, getting that training for them, so we would be consistent in our, in our, what consequences we were setting.
Well, if you, Carly Saracini, educator effectiveness, yes, we have talked about. And Dr. Murray even wrote a letter to the board back in the fall, late fall, so that not only they could have consistency, but actually do the training with the state board. And so if you want us to take the lead on trying to set that up, we will do so. Because I think it could be done virtually. Do you think so, Ms. Douglas? I know that she's on here, our managing attorney. I think those things could possibly be done virtually, so we can set that up.
Absolutely. I don't see any problem with having it virtual.
I just knew that we had talked about it in the past, but I hadn't heard anything else on it. So, and I think it's something that if we're going to make these decisions, we've, we've got to have some consistency in what we're, what we're doing.
Thank you. We will get on it.
Thank you.
I agree with you, and I almost pulled these because I felt like they were pretty lenient. But both being probation, I didn't see, you know, that I saw the discrepancy, but with its birth probation, I don't know. So I look forward to that meeting and hope we can get some clarity and, and we can all support each other as we look at these issues.
I think it's something that's definitely needed is, is training.
Yes, and I think it's with both the board, both boards together. So there is consistency and reasoning why behind some things. I think that's really is the conversation that needs to be had.
On consent agenda, item number eight.
Okay. Number eight, any other questions?
Yes, on, on item number eight as well, Ms. Dean.
All right, Ms., Dr. Moore, go ahead.
Yes, is Tracy on?
I am.
Okay, thank you so much. So I noticed on another document that we had, was it two schools that were closed, two charter schools that were closed this current school year?
We have two district conversion charters that relinquished their charter. So they have, they had 1240 waivers, their district did, to cover what they needed to do with the charter. And so they decided not to, they were not going to renew, and so they decided to go ahead and just surrender their charter immediately.
Okay. And then for open enrollment, what is, was Litterock Prep, is it this year that they closed?
It was at the end of, it was June 30th of 2020.
Okay, okay. With that then, what is the number of open enrollment charter schools? What does that cap look like for this next year?
So we currently have 24. We'll be able to add five, so I think, I think that number's going to be around 29, but once I get that, I'll email that to you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Ms. McFetrich?
Yes, Ms. Dean, I just, on the charter school application form, I noticed there were 10 spaces for waivers. Are, are they limited to so many waivers per request?
They are not. We can, we can add more pages if needed.
Okay. I was just curious. I didn't know if there was a limit on waivers. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions or items that want to be pulled? Okay, with that, then we will need to, I'll look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Slow move.
I have a motion by Mr. Sutton.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McFetrich to accept the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposeds? Seeing none, motion passes. Okay. All right, okay. First, on the action agenda, we have the annual statistical report and presenter is Ms. Anita Sacre.
Good morning. Anita Sacre with DESE.
Good morning, Ms. Sacre. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm submitting to you the 2019-20 annual statistical report as required by ACA 62023, 2203. It's required to be submitted by February 15th each year. The report contains information on revenues, expenditures, and fund balances of all traditional school districts, open enrollment charter schools, and education service cooperatives. And it also provides budgeted amounts for 2020, 21. The reports are pulled from the statewide e-finance system, and there are summary pages for, that roll up for the traditional school districts, open enrollment charters, and the co-ops in the report. And at the end of the report, there are rankings by selected items such as per pupil expenditures, ADA, ADM, FTE, and classroom salary. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or discussion or comments?
I, I'll, I can start. If someone else has comments, I don't have to start. I, I wrote down a few notes because I think this is one of the most important documents for us and people across the state to look at. We, I wrote, we received an email recently about comparing two districts, and one district had bought computers for their students and the other district hadn't. So I went to look at the data here where it tells you how much per pupil they're spending for each student. And this, this comparison was, it turned out that Eureka Springs was spending 13,000 per kid and Bentonville was spending 9,000 per kid. Now Bentonville has a lot higher population, but this is important information for particularly parents to know so that they can have these conversations with their local school boards about what's going on in the state. I think there's just a lot of information here, especially when we're looking at the teacher salary conversation. I've been looking at that the past couple of weeks, and there's just a lot of districts that, you know, they have the same number of students, they receive the same amount per student, and they're spending their money differently by their choice. But parents and teachers need to know that and become actively involved in these conversations with the district. So that's just my plug in my notes.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Any other comments or questions?
Madam Chair, if I may, to Dr. Moore, to your thoughts on that, and just know this, this information is available. I mean, this is the type of information that's on MySchoolInfo. So, you know, that platform is, is much easier to extract information from than just having to look up this big, long report. So it is the type of information that we have encouraged patrons, school board members, and administrators, educators, to use to engage in those local conversations. And MySchoolInfo is a great platform for them to be able to extract that. So thank you for pointing that out, and I agree with you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, with that, I look for a motion on the board.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion by Dr. Moore to approve or to accept the report. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Woods. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposeds? Seeing none, motion passes. Next, we have the state review of PLSB 20-121 Ethics Hearing Committee Recommendation for Tiffany Gant, and the presenter will be Ms. Amy Douglas. Welcome, Ms. Douglas.
Good morning. This is Amy Douglas with PLSB. I sent you guys an email earlier in the week due to whether Mr. Valley, Ms. Gant's attorney, is also on. We would like to have this hearing in person. We are asking to continue it to the next state board meeting in March. Ms. Gant is not currently employed in an educational setting.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments? Okay, then we'll look for a motion to, if it be the will of the board to move this to the March meeting.
Slow move.
We have a, okay, we have a motion by Mr. Sutton and seconded by Ms. Newton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? Seeing none, motion passes. Okay, so we'll pick that up in March. Thank you so much, Ms. Douglas. Thank you, Mr. Valley, for joining us today.
Thank you. I'll take care.
You too. Okay, let's see. Next, we have consideration of charter authorizing panel meeting decision for River Valley Virtual Academy in Van Buren School District. And the presenter is Ms. Tracy Webb. Good morning, Ms. Webb.
Good morning. In January, the charter authorizing panel approved an amendment request for River Valley Virtual Academy to relocate their campus to another building on their campus. The district conversion charter was approved in 2016 and serves students in grades K-12. The decision for the board today is to decide to review or not review the charter panel's decision. And we have Dr. Nancy Robbins and Dr. Jennifer Feeney on Zoom if you have any questions.
Okay. Do we have any questions or concerns or comments?
I do have a question for the district, if that's okay.
Okay, Dr. Moore.
I have any concerns about the request to move campuses, but I was interested in the application of this budget. And the budget was considerably lower for K-8 students. I was wondering if devices and internet were included for those students and why there was a discrepancy in the K-8 versus the 912.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Feeney. I'm the principal at our virtual academy in Van Buren.
Good morning, Ms. Dean.
Hi, how are you guys? So the difference in the budget, in previous years, we used Pearson's teachers, which is what we're still doing for our K through 12, or for our nine through 12 students, which is why it's that $4,500 amount. This year, we're using our own K through 8 teachers. And so the price went down substantially from the 4,500, which included the content teachers, to the 400, 450 price range where we use our own teachers. And then for the devices, we have been checking out devices for all of our students who need them. And we are doing that from our local schools, you know, here with us because, you know, most of these kids that we picked up this year were already attending the Van Buren School District. And so they already had, you know, plenty of devices for all the kids, so we check those out through the, through the schools.
Okay, that makes sense. Is for those K-8 students, are they therefore being taught by local teachers? Are they doing largely asynchronous learning, or are they able to connect with the teachers?
The majority of it is asynchronous. They do have access because our virtual teachers are only virtual teachers, so they are not also teaching their class. And so it works out great, so they have flexibility to do the work when they want to do the work, but then they also have access to a teacher throughout the day. And so any sessions that they want to schedule, the teacher will schedule sessions each week. And so they have that flexibility, and they're not trying to steal time from a teacher who's also, you know, teaching in a classroom all day. And these are dedicated teachers to just the virtual setting.
That's great. What type of feedback have y'all received from parents?
It's been really positive. Last semester, we had a 93% pass rate for all of our students K through 12. And I know, you know, what you see in the news and our hearings are out, you know, the country is very poor pass rates for virtual schools, and we, we haven't experienced that. We have a really good setup, and we think we do a really good job of monitoring our kids. And so we had, you know, K through 12, 93% pass. So parents are really happy when they're successful as well.
That's great. Thanks for sharing. Those are all my questions, and I appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, well, with that, we're looking for a motion to review or not to review for this particular request.
I'll move to not review.
Move a motion to not review by Dr. Moore. Have a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Ms. Chambers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? Seeing none, motion passes. Okay. I'm trying to get back. Bear with me. Any problems? Okay. All right, now we have Bentonville School District. Ms. Webb?
The Bentonville School District is requesting an extension of previously granted 1240 waivers for teacher licensure, leased academic facilities, 120 clock hour requirement for a unit of credit, and uniform grading scale. Today, we have Dr. Jennifer Morrow, Assistant Superintendent, on Zoom if you have any questions.
Morning, Ms. Morrow. Do we have any questions or comments?
Ms. Dean, I would like to ask, if I may.
Yes, Ms. McFetrich.
It's been a very successful program for Bentonville, and I'm really excited about that. I, I wonder if they could address a little bit more about safety concerns when our students are off campus and if they have the policies in place that keep those students safe.
Absolutely. There's a number of safety concerns we, we have to consider. Some of those just have to do with facilities and the many types of facilities they can be in. Some of those have to do with emotional and physical safety of an individual. And we have found opportunities over five years of a program, certainly for those policies and our systems to kick in and to help support and protect our students. One of these particular waivers is about facilities, and all of the facilities off campus where we have had classes with or without a fee have also conformed with the school facility standards and the Arkansas School Facilities Manual. But we've also had opportunities to make phone calls to employers where our students have internships, whether those students were in our night professional studies program or our career studies in our traditional CTE programs. There are times when we have to pick up a phone and talk to an employer about the same sort of harassment concerns we might have in our own population. Anytime you've got 20,000 humans together. So we have found the opportunity for the Arkansas Facilities Manual and all of our other policies to come together and help us.
What do you do about background checks? Is that a requirement at all?
So some of our programs in the district require background checks. For example, if you're a volunteer coach or a volunteer with our band, some of our programs do not. So currently, we do not have a background check for every mentor in every internship program. But it is something that we discuss, and depending on the agency we're dealing with, some of those are already inherent in that business. And some of those, and some of those businesses are higher than ours.
All right, thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions?
Ms. Dean, I have a question. It's probably for Ms. Webb.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Newton.
I know that we're going to start getting more and more of these requests for extensions of these waivers. Is there any way that we could put in there that they would have to give us some sort of data on the success of the waiver in the past, how successful was it being over the period of time that they've had this waiver?
Absolutely. We can just add that as a question.
Thank you.
We'd like to hear a little bit from Bentonville about their standard space grading. I know it looks like y'all have been doing that for the elementary levels and are moving that up to middle schools. I'd like to hear a little bit more in depth than what was on your application about those plans at the middle school level.
Certainly. I'm Jennifer Morrow. I'm the executive director for grades nine through 12, and I'm going to defer and switch seats here with my colleague. It's Dr. Matt Saifright, and he's our executive director for middle grades.
Good morning, everybody. Thanks for hosting us.
Good morning.
If I could repeat the question, just more specifics about how we've been successful with our standard space grading in the past? Is that the question?
Yes, and what that looks like going into the middle school grades.
Certainly, happy to. Our elementary schools have been implementing and have used a standard space reporting tool for many years now. I think in summary, the key points that our elementary staff would say has been an improvement over their past reporting is an increased, a significantly increased depth of understanding of the standards. All the formative and summative assessment measures that it takes to accomplish our state standards, it really drives them together. The PLC work together has been significantly improved since we've gone to that reporting feature. And another main area would be our feedback to parents is very much, very much improved. The focus is on student learning, not on a grade, not on how many points did I get, but whether my student really learned that desired standard and to what degree. So that's the summary. We have, in the middle level grades, our middle schools are grades five and six, and then our junior highs are seven and eight. So we have been kind of living with one foot in, in two different worlds, where we have constantly tried to improve our assessment practices while not officially implementing a standard space report card and thus the request for the waiver today. So we, with, with potential approval from y'all on this, we would like to implement a true standard space reporting tool to parents starting this fall in grades five. So that means our elementary kids, particularly today's fourth graders that are used to standard space grading and have been their whole time they've been with us, would not know anything different. They would roll up into fifth grade and have continued the standard space reporting very, in a similar way than we did in elementary school. And then we, again, with your approval, we would keep that class rolling up and adding basically one, one grade level at a time in an official capacity. We would still constantly continue the work of helping our teachers understand better assessment practices and focusing on that learning, not on the grades.
That's great, and that makes sense as far as that rollout goes as, as students move up. Does this, do y'all do some sort of training for parents? Or is that done primarily at parent-teacher conference, or what does that look like?
Significant, significant training for parents happens. That, that hasn't had to be so significant the last couple of years because we've been doing it long enough that our elementary parents are used to it. So we do make concerted effort to kind of onboard parents that are new to the district that maybe aren't used to that kind of grading system. But it's not the, our elementary schools are past that initial implementation phase, so it is just the way we do things now. So with, with our middle schools, we will have a specific plan on how we will help parents understand the standard space report card. Quite honestly, it's, it's kind of, we're kind of going to have to not do what we've done in the past. Our middle schools have had to teach parents about the standard report card, not the standard space. We've had our parents rolling through on standard space report card, and then they get to fifth grade, and we have to actually do the opposite of what you're asking. We have to teach them what a old-fashioned report card looks like and, and, and because they're not used to it. And so the beauty is, we won't have to do that anymore. We'll be able to continue with what they're used to in our, in our elementaries when they roll up. But yes, to your point, Dr. Moore, we will certainly have specific training sessions, be that online training sessions and Q and As and videos on our YouTube channel, little snippets of how do I do this, how do I do this, introductory kind of things, and of course, be available to them.
That's great. Thank you for sharing. I, I want to come visit someday and look more into that. That's, that's great. Thank you.
Anybody's welcome anytime. But it's cold up here.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Any other questions?
Ms. Dean, I have a question for Ms. Webb, if she's still there.
Yes, Ms. Chambers, go ahead.
I am. Forgive me. I feel like I'm in a scene from The Birds. I have several dozen robins right outside my window, taking apart a holly tree. And every now and then it gets a little crazy, so forgive me. The question has to do with the waivers and even back to something Ms. Newton was talking about. So, Ms. Webb, I think it is, it would be really helpful to, this question that we're going to pose at the end if somebody comes back to renew a waiver. So the more specific we can be about what expectations, I'm sorry, what expectations did you have? The dog's a little nervous about the birds here.
The birds.
What expectations did you have? What results did you get? What happened maybe that exceeded your expectations or was less than maybe what you might have anticipated? And the reason why that's so important, I think, for not just renewing this waiver, but if you've started to live with a waiver for 10 years, for a decade, it starts to beg the question, does this become a consideration for a standard? And/or how do we share it with other school districts? So that there might be some shared learning on the usefulness of that waiver. Just, it's, it's, it's an ongoing question, I think, as a board that we've had about waivers and how long do you live with them, and when does it become something other than an exception?
We've had the same, same conversations here as well, the department. Mainly about the number of schools that have the waiver, and is that something that we need to look at, waiving for all schools?
Well, and not to throw too many things into this, but even back to Dr. Moore's question about finding question about finances. I love that every community and every district is making decisions that are best for them. But my guess is if we can also find ways to share with them what different districts are doing and why, more consideration for them as they take care of their students.
Excellent point. Thank you for bringing that up. Do we have any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, then we are looking for a motion to either review or not to review for Bentonville School District.
I move to not review.
I have a motion, motion by Susan Chambers to review. I'm sorry, Ms. to second.
Do not.
Ms. Dean, is this a review or not review, or is this an approval of the waiver? I think this should be an approval of the waiver.
My mistake.
Restate my approval of the waiver, please.
Okay.
And I, Adrienne, said I will second.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve the waiver by Ms. Chambers, seconded by Ms. Woods. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Webb.
Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you, Bentonville.
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome. Okay, next we have the approval for reading specialist K through 12 licensure test, and that will be Ms. Carly Saracini. Good morning.
Good morning. Carly Saracini, Educator Effectiveness and Licensor. And before you today is the, our recommendation for adopting the Praxis Reading Specialist Assessment 5302 with the cut score of 160, which would be in an effective date, September 1, 2021. Every, about every five years, standards, new standards come out, the reviewed, and this is just an update of this current assessment. And so we are recommending for action to approve the new test, the updated test and the cut score.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? Well, I want to say I do have a, I guess, a comment or slash question. Does this, this new licensure test, does this address the issues that we've heard so much from the teachers about the difficulties of, of passing the praxis? Does this new test kind of address those issues?
This is, this particular test does not, but this is a particular test that is an endorsement. So this is someone that already has a license that is going back for the reading specialist, which is usually master's or specialist degree. This does not address that. We have a pretty high pass rate on this reading specialist test in the nineties, so it doesn't address it. But we are addressing with that new AAP where if you score within two SEM, that you can, it's that super score that we talked about last time. And that is addressing that, but we are also in the process. We know that we are pulling all the stakeholders together, not just the higher ed, the ed prep programs, but we're also pulling in our recruitment and retention specialists at the co-ops. And we are in the process of devising a kind of licensure assessment ready kind of class built around test-taking skills. I've spoke with Dr. Pride for Learning Services to help us that we could try to have some kind of something ready to help that. And of course, we have to involve higher ed, we have to involve other divisions in our agency to try to address those needs. And we feel that if we address the elementary math, science, social studies, and English, and do that at the elementary level and the middle level, and then address the science of reading besides test-taking, test-taking skills, that we will better prepare candidates to be successful. So that's what we're working on, and we would really like to get something out by summer.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Saracini, does this also address our dyslexia teachings?
The reading specialist does not. The reading specialist, sometimes they, this, the dyslexia is a different pathway, a different program of study. Usually, this is reading intervention, and a lot of times, it includes a lot of your dyslexia interventions within this pathway, but dyslexia is another endorsement on a teaching license. It's just a different pathway, but they do cross over.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Okay, well, with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve, if that's the will of the board.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion to approve by Ms. McFetrich.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Moore. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saracini. Appreciate you. Okay, next we have high school course, high school course requirements by Dr. Tiffany Pride and Ms. Rachel Horne.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Rachel Horne, Director of Curriculum and Assessment in the Office of Learning Services. This morning, we respectfully request the approval of the 38 required high school courses for the 2021-22 school year. Key changes this year include an update to the layout for improved clarity for district users, the addition of previously approved physical education courses which provide flexible options for districts, and an update to the language for computer science and computing or CSC courses. These CSC courses are transitioning from single semester course codes as found in the current high school courses to year-long courses.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments?
Just for clarity's sake, Ms. Horne, we're not changing the actual required number of hours. We're just basically changing the layout and then the offerings.
That's correct. The only major addition with the addition of those PE courses, it specifically lists out those course codes which were approved previously.
Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Newton?
The computer science, it just says sequential combination. So are they, are they free to choose any one course or two course from those that we approved last month? What is, what is required there?
Rachel, would you like me to answer? So Ms. Newton, there's actually a newer version of that document out there that we changed that language slightly because we are transitioning to that year-long course code. Instead, that's sequential combination, which was on the old semester course codes. We, Rachel and I, actually Dr. Pfeffer caught the, the fact that we need to update that. And so there is an update that it now says. Rachel, can you read it, what it currently says?
I can. It says any ADE-approved year one computer science and computing one-year credit course.
Okay.
That, that was my question. Okay. I, I didn't, I didn't go back in and, and update my, my agenda, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Owen, and thank you, Ms. Horne. Do we have any other questions? All right, then I'll look for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Ms. Woods.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Newton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Pride, and thank you, Ms. Horne.
Thank you.
Okay, now we've made it over into the afternoon agenda. Let's take a break. Okay, just want to make sure we've got everybody back on first. Mr. Sutton, are you with us yet? Hopefully he'll join us here in just a minute. Well, maybe he'll join us in just a second. Let's go ahead and get started. We are at reports. So first up, we have our Arkansas Teacher of the Year Report. Mr. Lookadoo.
Hey, good morning, Board. Great to be with you. I'm going to share this and get going here. All right. So we already heard Bentonville's School District talk about standards-based grading a little bit. And that was, I was actually excited to hear that. Dr. Moore asked some of the same questions I had because it is something I truly believe in. I have done with my classes for two years. And I think it really does promote student learning within that and effective teaching, too. So just a couple of weeks ago, I had the chance to talk with the Division of Learning Services and content specialists from all the co-ops across the state. And it really centered around this question. What is the purpose of grades? And to me, when we talk about grades, that question, the purpose question, is essential. That's where it starts. And I think we have to really think about that. And talking about classroom grades for students. And we had a great, great little discussion. You know, it's always interesting, promoting discussion with a large Zoom group. So it was fun to hear some of their thoughts, too. And, you know, as we think about standards-based grading and what this means, you know, I find it intriguing how similar it is to our PLC process that we are really pushing, you know, developing priority standards or selecting those, creating proficiency scales. And those are, you know, clear, defined expectations for students, for parents, for teachers, to all know what is exactly expected to reach proficiency in this goal, in this standard. And I think doing that work, that's a lot of work upfront, but it is the essential work to create a great system. And then we move from those to really that, what class is, right? Exploring, teaching, and learning, and we're collecting evidence. So we're seeing what students know. And then the biggest difference to me, when we actually go to a standards-based grading system, is the reporting. It's the feedback that students are getting. And so that is, that's kind of the biggest shift. I think everything else, when we talk about standards-based grading, that's the PLC process. I think it's just one more step to say, okay, now how do we report this back to students, to parents, and families? And so I wanted to show an example of something we call our proficiency scale. And so you'll see that there, a lot of times with standards-based grading, you'll see kind of a four, four levels. Some have five. But typically, what you're doing is you're condensing. And we have this 0 to 100% scale. And it's like, what is a 79? What is a 72? What's a 63? You know, and so we're trying to condense that and say, where are you in your learning? And so that meeting level, like you are meeting the goal. We have that exceeding, they're really showing application, that in-depth inferences of whatever the concept is. And then we can scale down as well. So where that student is at and what, it really helps us identify what specific content the student needs to work on. And I love this kind of picture of it because if you think about, so I taught Algebra I mostly. You think of a traditional grade, and a student has a 76% in the class. And that comes from an average of all the assignments, quizzes, the tests. And then you spit out this number. Well, what does that student need to work on? And I think that's where this idea comes in so great is that, you know, we have specific goals, and these are math goals, but, you know, whatever it may be. And then I could give that student a level of saying, hey, here's where you're showing me you're at. Now we can clearly see what the student needs to work on. This level one, the beginning level, like that's where the student needs to go. If I see just a number, I'm not really sure, you know, where that comes in. And so that's why I really believe in this. And so the way we have, I thought the waiver was interesting with the uniform grading scale. At the schools that I've been at, we have converted back to a more traditional. So you'll see this. So we would give students exactly where they're at. So maybe they're ready, maybe they're close on that one to four scale. But then at the end, for that report card's sake, to fit that system, it would then translate back into a defined percentage. And I think this is an interesting way to still kind of see that 0 to 100 in some sense, but really have clearly defined expectations and know where that student is at. And so I didn't know what day we were going to be doing this or what time I'd be going. And so I just captured two people. I wanted you to hear an administrator's perspective, as well as a teacher's perspective, that is doing this and has been doing this for the last couple of years at the junior high level in Springdale. So I will fix the audio. Okay. So hopefully this comes through well. And here we go. It's just a short two-minute video.
So a great advantage of our school-wide standards-based grading model at Springdale Lakeside Junior High is that it changes the conversations in our building from what we're teaching to what students are learning. So our teachers have a much more clear understanding of how to focus remediation efforts to the specific skill or content the students need help with. So, for example, instead of conversations about bringing up grades by doing this worksheet, or these bonus points, or doing these tasks, now our conversations with kids are more like, how to show proficiency in creating a graph in math class? Or how do I show proficiency in using credible sources to create a claim in English or social studies? So the students are more clear about what they're learning, and our teachers are more clear about how to provide that personalized support for each student's need.
A lot of times, you know, you're running around trying to get kids to complete certain things. And now the focus, when we move to standards-based grading, is a kid demonstrating that they know how to do something. So when it comes to the PLC, I do think it puts a focus on a couple of things. One, the fact that we're having to identify in the standards, or what the state identifies as the most important things. But it gives us, it makes us examine that and makes us make sure we're teaching everything that needs to be taught. And it also pushes us to look at data and look at how we're doing things. From like a teacher's standpoint, it has us continuously monitoring and looking at what students know and what students struggle with, so that we're able to give them intervention or extension and put them in a position where they can be as successful as possible.
Come on, here we go. See if we can get past it. There we go. All right. So I really like this visual, and this will kind of bring us to a close here with my thing. And honestly, like thinking of, how do I report on grading system or standards-based grading within five to seven minutes when I can, we could talk about this for days. You know, it's a little tricky to how do we get this concise? But I think this, this visual really shows why I believe in it so much. As we move from, you know, traditional grades have often reflected what you see in the red on the left side. And, you know, it is behavior. Did you turn something in? You know, it's compliance, like check you got 10 out of 10, you know, points on this because you did it. Doesn't matter how you did it. We just go ahead and say, yes, good job, you participated. And so I think we're shifting from some of that, some of the quantity of just, we've got to have a certain number of grades every week, to how do we get to quality, meaningful grades that show student learning and where they are at? And so that's why I do really like this. I hope that we continue to see kind of this move even up to some of the higher grade levels. We've seen it a lot more at the elementary. And so I think it is interesting to see that grow because I think this quote here, we have to fit the system to the purpose, not fit a purpose to the system. And so, you know, when we think of grades and we have a grading system, we don't want to say, well, here's the system. Now let's find what that purpose should be. We want to say, here's the purpose of grades. Now let's create that system that goes with it. And so I think that's so important. But thank you for your time, and I am happy to answer any questions or discuss this further.
Thanks so much, Mr. Lookadoo. I love this trend that we're going, we're leaning toward in education as far as I keep hearing demonstrating proficiency and just being able to show that you understand and know what's going on. I think the last month, we talked about that when it comes to the testing for our teachers, the practice tests, and just ensuring that our teachers can demonstrate that they understand what is going on and what they need to know and how to, how to teach, rather than demonstrating that they can know how to test. And I think there's such a huge difference there because some people may not have the skills to test, but they can demonstrate the proficiency. So I think this is a wonderful trend that we're, that we are leaning toward. And I'm excited to see the future about this. So thank you so much for your report.
Ms. Dean, I have a question for Mr. Lookadoo. Joel, you know, especially now with shifting to virtual, you know, some districts and some schools have had to do that more frequently. But what does that look like at Lakeside or some of the other schools that you're familiar with that use this specifically in reference to the meaningful assignments rather than those activity-based things that sometimes, you know, we know have gone home in AMI packets? And, you know, where there's not just a lot of meaningful instruction that happens there?
I think that's a great point. I think that really highlights why in this time, this year, we've seen even more of an importance on this because the teacher that you saw in that video even talked about that, like we'll have students who are quarantined for two weeks, and then they come, you know, and how do we, in the traditional system of, well, here's, you know, X number of assignments, get all of those back to me. It is, okay, here's the learning goal. Here are some things that you can do to demonstrate that. And let's see your progression in that. And I think that is, it's such a shift in the conversation, a good shift. And I think we've seen that be important in this time, whether it's virtual, whether it's kids who are in and out, face to face. I think all of that has been, been very helpful to have. I know, you know, that in some things, when we talk about systems, like virtual systems that are set up, and it is, it's a click, 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 like you've got to go through all of those. Those systems are out there where it is, you know, here's, here's 100 assignments for this course. And I think that's why we've got to really evaluate the types of virtual systems we are using. Because I think that's another important piece is like, yeah, that student didn't complete all 150 assignments, but they clearly have demonstrated in some of these that they truly know it. So why should they be punished to sit there and repeat and repeat and repeat? So I think that's, you bring up a great point.
Joel, this was an excellent presentation, and I really appreciate the time that you put in to gather the information and present it to us. Just a question that kind of ties back to what Ms. Chambers had said earlier when we were talking about waivers in standards is to do this standards-based grading, did, I guess your district had to have a waiver to do this or not, you know?
So I don't believe so because we converted back to that 0 to 100 scale. So and I couldn't, but if there was like ready, calculated as an 84%. So what the report card was, you saw a percentage in that. What the teacher could show and share with the parents was the standards-based grade model. So it is, it's kind of that extra step. I would love to see that taken out, honestly, like in my personal opinion, to be able just to say, and I guess that's what that waiver is, right? And so to be able to say, here's where the student is at in each of these. When we talk about GPA and, you know, all of that, when you get into those high school credits, tricky, and how do we do that with higher ed? And it goes so much further. So that's, that's kind of why we were still going back to that number-based.
So has it moved, has the standard base moved up through high school?
It, so our, in Springdale, what we've seen, like Lakeside Junior High, where I've been, at the Don Tyson School of Innovation is another place where you'll see it. And that is, that goes up. But they do the same thing where we convert back to that number. And so I can't speak as to what, you know, higher ed takes and all of that. So that gets, that's beyond me. But I would love to see that push.
Very well done. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Ms. Newton, if I can join in just for a minute? And this is really a timely conversation. Miss Ywali and I last night were having a conversation. She, in working with our PLC pilots, one of the high schools has reached out, and they are implementing standards-based grading in their work. And they were talking about, you know, there's even some barriers as far as with our reporting tools because, you know, you pretty much are, you do the grading and you keep track of it, but then you do have the number part over here and how it's entered into the system, into the e-school that then gets reported. So just last night, we were talking about, we need to sit down and, you know, have conversations with schools and learn more because as this is moving into high school, it does take on a completely different look. And I think then that opens up that opportunity for us to have the conversations and not bring higher ed in on the back end. It's like, let's truly have this conversation now. If we are looking, you know, looking at possibly measuring learning in different ways in the future. So I think, Joel, I didn't know that this is what you were going to present today, but it is like perfectly on time with our conversation. So I'm really excited.
Ms. Dean, could I ask a question, too, please?
Yes.
Joel, I love this presentation, and especially the last slide. I'm very interested in, if you're thinking from a PLC perspective, how you, how you could give examples of how to teach from the left to what would be different and how you would teach as you move to the right? But the other thing that I thought was so virtuous, when I first started on the board, we talked a lot about growth. We talked about proficiency, but we talked a lot about growth. And this method that you're talking about seems to blend beautifully both. You're talking about proficiency, but you have meaningful information about where you're at from a growth perspective to get to proficiency. And I don't remember seeing that before in anything we've talked about, and that's very encouraging.
Thank you. And I think that is, that's what I've seen with my own students is that ability to say, you know, you're not there quite yet on this learning goal or on whatever the concept is. And traditionally, you know, if you bombed the test or it didn't go well the first time when you were supposed to learn it, well, that haunts you the rest of your semester, the rest of your high school career. And so, you know, what if that student comes back, they work at it, they work at it, they work at it, and they've truly mastered what that is? Should that be reflected in their grades? I believe so. And I think that's what this does because again, it is, it's both, like you said, growth and proficiency. I think when we talk about teaching and shifting from that left to the right, kind of two things. One, I think the teaching doesn't have to necessarily change. It's more about how we report and give feedback. But at the same time, I think in some instances, the teaching does have to change because it depends on where that teacher is at in this. And what reason I say that? So let's say, you know, the teacher truly believes in, you know, doing just types of assignments that, you know, here it is, and we're just going to give a bunch of these, and y'all give them back, and it's a checkbox. That teaching has to change. Whereas, you know, we truly are That teaching has to change. Whereas, you know, we, we truly are, you know, hopefully we're seeing a lot of collaboration. We're seeing a lot of students engaging in rich discussions. And in those instances, I don't think the teaching has to change and get away from that. It's, okay, now how do I gather the evidence for you as an individual student? And then, you know, give that feedback to you so you know where you're at in, in that. So that's where I would say it's, it's more just a reporting and, and feedback issue.
Thank you, Mr. Lookadoo. We have more questions after more?
Yes, this is great. Do we have any idea of how many schools in the state currently do standard space? And is it primarily at elementary or high school or kind of mixed?
I, I don't know. I don't know if anyone knows.
I'm not sure. Stacy, would you?
Yeah, I don't know how, yeah, I don't know how many schools are doing it. I will, I would say though, it's predominantly going to be in the elementary that you see that practice.
Is there a place where districts are working together on this or can learn from each other if, if they're interested in implementing? Or is it just organically reaching out?
I think, I think the two things, the work of the PLC, as that it does expand into more high schools. You're going to see the principles in those model schools be leveraged to help others with that. And then also within the high reliability school framework, which is, you know, the approach that schools are looking at in terms of this continuous cycle of improvement. When you get to those levels four and five, that's where you're getting into that standards, the standards-based grading and competency-based learning. And so I think we have some foundations there that we want to continue building on.
Yeah. And I do want to mention too, the Office of Innovation and Education. So one of the, their focus areas moving into this next school year is on competency-based instruction and trying to provide direct support for schools who wanted to think about doing through school of innovation and what that would look like and just providing professional development around that area. So that's something that we're going to see those partners also taking a lead in.
Dr. Feffer, I, I wouldn't want a district to do more than they have the capability to, but certainly based on what Secretary Key said, as districts are thinking about their virtual schools next year and making those applications. I definitely, you know, even if they just do it with their virtual school as they move forward, I think it's something we really want to encourage districts to look at with that option.
Ms. Newton?
Dr. Feffer, one of the things that you said a while ago, I think that, that as a department and, and, you know, I think we see that this is a, is very beneficial for students and families and, and just for learning in general, you know, to do what you said, let's, let's sit down and let's see what barriers are that we have erected as a department. And if there are, what can we do to change that, you know, and I think that we need to be really thoughtful about the process and really spend some time because, you know, if there's a barrier, then, then, you know, some are not going to say, well, it's too much. And so really think about that.
I know the feedback we've received over the last several years in, in district from schools that have explored this, it's a mindset shift that's needed, not just for their staff, but for parents. And there are some schools that have tried to move this direction and they, the pushback from parents because of the lack of understanding. You know, parents want to see a number or want to see a grade and because that's what they are accustomed to. And, and there are some districts and schools, I think, that have, have explored moving this direction, but backed away from it just because of the concerns from parents that I don't know what this means. So I think Joel addressed it. I think Lakeside has probably done a great job of helping their parents understand it. And when he says that they have to actually explain, you know, would, would districts have to explain the, the standard grading system, that means they've done a really good job of, of helping parents get to a good place. So it's a work in progress and I'll, Stacy, you beat me to it. I was going to say Dr. Arola and her team have been working on this with districts for a number of years now.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I do have one more comment and I, I've been sitting here trying to search and find, I do know that we were making some updates last year to the rules when we changed the uniform grading scale and where we put that in and added some components for standards-based grading. I just cannot put my hands on it. I will find that for you and send it out. I may need Courtney and Mary Claire and Lori to assist me because I know those were edits that were made to a set of rules this last year. I've just not been able to figure out where, where exactly we did that. But I'll find that for you guys. But we did do some updates in that area, at, at least leading up into high school before it was set where elementary could do it, but allowing middle school and high school. So we'll find that, those updates.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lookadoo, for that great report. We appreciate that. Look forward to even more. Okay, we are to our state board members' reports. Do we have reports from anyone? No? Ms. Newton?
I just want to say thank you to the Lisa Academy. I was able to visit there last week and, and they, they are doing an excellent job of working through the challenges of, of the pandemic. They have some students virtual and some students onsite and just working with their teachers. And, and so I just wanted to reach out and say thank you to them.
Thank you. I had an opportunity to visit Pine Bluff School District a few weeks back. I'd like to thank Ms. Sheila Whitlow and Mr. Crossley for guiding me around the campuses. Got to see all of, all the campuses except for the, the junior high, I believe. So I'll be back to visit the junior high and probably the high school again. I thoroughly enjoyed visiting the pre-K building. That was like the highlight of my day. They've got some, they've got some great teachers there. Ms. Peoples, I believe, is the, the principal. And she does such a, a great job of developing her teachers. She definitely pushes them to go further in their education. As a result, she has a lot of turnover because she has so many teachers that go on to do even better, greater things. But the, the teachers there love what they do. I just, there was one classroom, I think it was Ms. Greenville, where she was so engaging, the, the kids were having a blast learning. And the school is, it's pleasant, it's quiet, it's, it's, it's quiet, but not too quiet, clean environment. And you can just tell that the children are just full of joy there. And they've got a pretty full building. I think they're at, they have most of their students there. Quite a few students being in, in the building for pre-K. Also got to visit the elementary school. And they're doing a great job of balancing and, and juggling, teaching online while they have students in the classroom as well. So I was glad to see that. And also got a chance to visit the high school. Now granted, I've visited on a, on a Friday, so it wasn't a whole lot going on because that was their day to focus on classes like band and, and the electives, Fridays were their electus day. So we had a good conversation about the engagement level there at the high school. They are working at, at, at getting more students engaged. There are quite a few students that are, are online. It's not as, as many students that are there at the building. So I'm, I'm looking forward to going back to them and on a day that's not a Friday, possibly a Monday with my schedule now with the session, that was when I could squeeze it in. But we, we talked about different ways, different systems that they can put in place to ensure that when there are students that don't show up for virtual class, don't show up at the building, that we can make sure that those students don't fall in the cracks and we just lose touch and we don't know where they are. We don't know what's going on with them. So they've, they, I think, believe they did home visits at the beginning of the school year. So they're going to continue with that. I encourage them to reach out to their faith leaders, the pastors, youth pastors and churches in the area. They can kind of help them get an idea of where their students are and what's going on with their families. But I thoroughly enjoyed the visit. I look forward to going back this month and just following and tracking along with how they're progressing with this, this merger with Dalloway. And I'll be back to Dalloway to visit as well. But I appreciate Ms. Whitlow and Mr. Crossley for their hospitality and all of the teachers there for hosting me. So that was a highlight for me. Also got an opportunity to do a little video with Superintendent Mike Poor with Little Rock School District. He does this awesome thing once a year. It's called Poor Man on the Roof. And it's an opportunity in January, well, in February to ensure that the students in the Little Rock School District have plenty of food. You know, January and February are months where donations drop. A lot of times people think about others that may be in need during those holiday seasons, November, December, around Christmas. But in January is where it gets really tough, January and February. So he partnered with my church, St. Mark Baptist Church and the Tendaji Community Project, where they have after-school programs. They have a program called reclaiming scholars where students can come if they are disciplined and suspended from school, rather than them being at home by themselves or in the streets getting into God knows what. They are there at the church where they can get the help that they need. They get their homework packets from Little Rock School District. And they get some behavioral modification help as well. So they, it's, it's really about that wraparound services. What all does a child need? Not, not just education as far as standards and things of that sort, but the basic needs. Kids are hungry. And so it's, it's hard for a child to learn when their stomach is grumbling. So I was glad to be able to partner with him. We did a quick video on Facebook Live. I planned on joining him when he did the transfer over to St. Mark with all of the, the canned goods. What he does for Poor Man on the Roof is that he asks for donations from the different organizations in the community. And, and they partnered with the school and this year they partnered with St. Stevens, oh, excuse me, Stevens Elementary and St. Mark Baptist Church. His office was stacked high, piled high with non-perishable goods. And it was donated to St. Mark so that they can disseminate it into the, the community. It's a perfect example of what we've been talking about as far as family and community engagement. It takes a village to make sure that our children get what they need. And super proud to be able to partner with him. He's an awesome superintendent. I would know, we didn't get an opportunity to present him this, this, this month, but he's definitely got a special award coming up that he was already, actually, actually already presented with, if I'm not mistaken. But that was on the first, I think. But just, it's, it's a pleasure to see someone who puts all of their effort and, and thoughts and, and energy into our students and the great partnerships that he's made in the community. So just want to congratulate him and thank him for that opportunity to, to work with him on that project. Okay, next we have our commissioners' report.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. First, we have attached to the agenda some follow-up information that you all had asked for. And Ms. Kaufman is on and would be happy to let her comment on any of this information that she provided or answer any questions that you all have. But I can share my screen so you could see, just so everyone can take a look at that. And Ms. Kaufman, if you have anything you want to say, please jump in.
Thank you, Secretary Key. On the first slide that Secretary Key has up there, you had requested to have the actual number of students that graduated and the actual number of students that were expected to graduate in each cohort. One of the interesting comments from Dr. Rola as we were working on this data is that graduation rate is probably the hardest, most complex calculation that we do within our accountability system. And so I would just encourage everyone to go back to that federal guidance that is linked there at the bottom. And we're, quick reminder, you know, the color coding shows that the cohort, cohort of four-year graduates then transfers up to the next year as the fifth year cohort. On the next slide, the second question was asked, how do we rank in comparison to other states? And so the best source that we could find online is actually 2017 data, but I've given you a link to that data. We looked at all of the numbers and I wanted you to know the top 10 states rank in between 89 and 91% graduation rate in 2017. So that put us at number 11 with 88% in 2011. So in the calculation for graduation rate in our process, we start with the raw data that comes in from our cycle reports. And through that, we're looking at, do we have any students that have duplicate IDs? So there's a lot of things that we're checking to make sure that we have a very accurate cohort of students. And then as we begin to look at, back to that federal guidance, are there students that can be removed from the cohort based on allowable reasons for removal? Such as transferred out of state, if we have the appropriate documentation for them and the student was on time to graduate, when they left, they can be excluded. And so I just wanted you to kind of see some real numbers for that. A little over 3,000 kids are moving across state lines. Approximately 1,400, and notice this is with the 2020 graduation cohort. So approximately 1,400, a little over 1,461 students transferred to homeschool as noted in their drop code and with the proper documentation. These students were on time. So it's a very clear distinction. A student could drop to go to homeschool, but if they're not on time to graduate, then they cannot be excluded. 173 went to private school. 62 students were deceased in that cohort. Now notice that line that says 95 students were from a different cohort. I just wanted you to kind of see that because if someone by error has included in e-school that a student was in a cohort, then if that is an improper placement, when we're doing our data process, we are cleaning those up and well, as well, and putting those kids in the proper cohort. So next slide. So the question I think Dr. Hill asked was about how do graduates, non-graduates compare? And we looked at it by region. And what you're looking for on the right-hand side is the percent among graduates. So if you look at the 32,666 graduates from the 2020 cohort, you'll see the distribution by the five regions of the state. If you look on the left-hand side, you see the distribution of the 4,119 students that did not graduate. So we're looking for proportionality and what we know is that in the central region, more of our non-graduates are going to school or not going to school, whichever case that is in the central region. In fact, what I think is important to think about of these 400, 4,119 non-graduates, that about half of them did not have a drop code. So approximately 2,000 of those kids never dropped. They continued to come to school. They just did not meet graduation requirements. Maybe they didn't have enough credits to graduate. They'd fallen behind. But the important thing is they continue to come to school. So we're hoping to see them in the fifth year cohort. So we're hoping to see them in the fifth-year cohort or some way that they're going to get their diploma. Approximately half of our non-graduates do have a drop code, but it may not be a drop code, if you go to the next slide, that can be excluded. So we begin to look at those students that have no, that do have a drop code. And I just wanted to give you a few statistics on those. 3.4% of them moved out of state, but we did not have the proper documentation to exclude them. Approximately 2% were homeschooled, but we did not have the proper documentation. Or the student was not on time when they moved to homeschool. So that federal guidance is very particular about if a student can or cannot be excluded. Approximately 12% of students said they were leaving school to pursue a GED, which is not an allowable. Yes, sorry.
I'll make sure I'm on the right slide here. Because the next one I had was the race ethnicity.
Yes, I'm getting to that.
Okay, I just didn't want to make sure I didn't miss one.
So in actuality, because we do not have a dropout definition anymore, that was a no child left behind requirement. Now we have a non-graduate requirement. But approximately 1,300 students dropped for not showing up, lack of attendance. Maybe they fell behind on credits and just gave up some undocumented reason. And so as we look at who are these kids that are not graduating, that we don't have the proper documentation, or maybe they're not attending anymore. What we're looking then is to look at them by race ethnicity. And as you look at this, what you're seeing is the purple line are the 32,666 graduates. So that kind of sets the context. What's the distribution of our graduates? And then we're looking on the blue line at the 4,119 non-graduates. And so we're looking to see, is there some proportionality, once again, by race and ethnicity? And what you're seeing is that there is an over-representation in our African-American and Hispanic students in the non-graduate group. Next slide. And finally, as we break it down even more into the special populations that we identify for federal reporting, the same situation exists between the graduates, the purple line, the 32,666 kids, and the blue line, the non-graduates, 4,119. You see an over-representation for economically disadvantaged students with disabilities, homeless, migrant, and English learners. And so I think it really speaks to students that are at high risk for not graduating on time within the four-year cohort as expected. And just in closing, I would just like to say how much I appreciate, of course, all of our partnerships in being able to bring you this data. But how wonderful our school districts are doing at not only providing better services and encouraging kids to graduate on time or come back and continue to, into the fifth year to graduate. But our state is doing a tremendous job of improving our data accuracy. So every year as I bring you this data, I am more and more confident that we have accurate data. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Deb. We'll pause there to see if y'all have any questions about any of this information.
Secretary Key, I had a question about the number of deceased students. That seems, I don't have any sense of context, but that seems like such a high number. Do we know anything more about those students or what happened to them or any statistics?
We do not.
Thank you.
I think it goes though to, I mean, you look at other data points and other studies. Arkansas ranks rather high in the number of adolescent deaths. So it does seem like a high number, but in the context of some of those other maybe non-education-related data points that we hear about, it's a staggering number when you think about 62 young people's lives out of a cohort that are no longer with us.
Which I think further encourages us with all the programs and everything else that we're doing. Hopefully that will help address and lower that number because it does seem tragically high.
Indeed. And we'll talk about some of the work that we're doing here in a few minutes to address some of those issues. Any other question on this data or on these charts?
This was great. Thank you so much for providing it. Is this information available by district, specifically the race and the special populations? Is that available by district on MySchoolInfo?
Yes, if you go to the school report card, our information is posted there on MySchoolInfo. And then, of course, there's a greater breakdown on MySchoolInfo as well.
Yeah, I think it's so hard, looking at these numbers, thinking about particularly the central region, what is happening with those students. And hopefully as districts see this data within their region and within their district, they're having those hard conversations to start the programs or do the things to increase the graduation rates. But thank you for providing us today.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. One of the things I would say, we have been working with districts in the central region to ensure their data accuracy. But they are very large schools, first of all. And second of all, they have a lot of students coming and going. And, you know, for a number of reasons, there are different facilities within the city or the county that draw kids in and out. But they are constantly working to be more and more accurate with their data and to better support kids. But there is quite a bit of movement of students.
Deb, I just wanted to thank you. You bring us such good information. And your great data always prompts more questions, which is maybe the highest compliment we can pay. But I can only imagine the detective work that this takes, and we do so appreciate it so that we can do a better job.
Thank you. A great team.
Okay, so thank you all and thank you, Ms. Kaufman and team, for helping with that. The next part of my report, as the graphic comes up, can I ask Dr. Pfeffer to give a general update on some of the work that's happening in our divisions? And we also have the ACs that can be on to answer specific questions or add any further detail to the information that Dr. Pfeffer will talk about.
Yes, good morning. I think we have about six slides trying to capture over the last month or so some of the highlights of work in various divisions. This first one is from Learning Services and particularly from our Coordinated School Health Group and some partnership work they've been doing with our Family Engagement Team. So, Dr. Pride, I'm going to actually let you just talk a little bit about some of the specific things that have been accomplished.
Thank you, Dr. Pfeffer. Good morning. And yes, our school health services staff has been very busy supporting the infrastructure in schools to support mental health and behavioral health services that students will need at this time. They hosted their third quarter school health meeting in partnership with DESI Family and Community Engagement. And it was on how to integrate health and wellness with family and community engagement, and they had over 200 attendees. So they are out there supporting our schools. Also, there are opportunities through our AWARE grant to support schools with implementation of SEL curriculums, mental health services, student-led advocacy groups, all which are predicated on our Guide for Life competencies that we know our students need, especially during this time as they are dealing with things they've never seen before. I missed the pandemic. Also, mental health first aid training opportunities are available. They have a trainer of trainer opportunity for the mental health first aid. And it will be there to support those adults who are, you know, engaged with students who may have crisis as it relates to mental health in schools. So there are other opportunities also around courses and webinars for grief and trauma-informed practices. They're going to be available this summer. So they are really out there building that infrastructure and providing those grant opportunities for our schools. They awarded 30 mini-grants for $10,000 to schools to support some of those efforts I mentioned earlier, like SEL curriculums, mental health services. And so that is also very helpful to our schools. Questions about that?
Okay. So our Office of Information Technology, I know last month we were talking to you a little bit about the plans for the website to be updated. And that mission has been accomplished, and it's always an ongoing work. I believe Regent is on the Zoom, though. If he can just give a brief overview of some of the other technology updates that they've accomplished.
Yes. Good morning, Board. Thank you, Dr. Pfeffer. The month of January was truly one of those months when we accomplished the release of six major systems. Typically, you know, we try to stick with one system a month because of the amount of support and the follow-through that is required to make a successful system launch. Apart from the DESI website, which was rewritten completely with a brand-new content management system with its own, you know, search engines and all. We launched three modules on Insights. One of the modules is going to be the digital learning and AMI data collection for school year 2021, '22. Along with that, we automated and digitalized the complete LEA assignment process, which is basically was a paper form that school districts used to submit for any LEA assignment changes, name change, grade change, annexation, consolidation. And there's a complete workflow that runs from app scan from the school districts to app scan to public school accountability, back to the leadership, and then it goes back to the public portal. All this work is fully digitalized and automated. So when superintendents request LEA changes, they will be able to do that not only digitally, but entire approval process has been cut down from six months to probably, you know, seven days now. So that's how we added some efficiency in that process. We also launched the Human Capital Planning Module for co-ops districts and schools by working directly with Carly's team, Ms. Saraceni's team. And I think that's going to be another great addition to Insights. We're extremely proud of launching, you know, the statewide community resources portal. The brainchild behind this project is obviously Dr. Pfeffer and Missy Wally. You know, we were just the implementers on the backend. This not only takes into account our work, but also the work that DHS and other agencies are doing. And it was a very quick and neat work. I wouldn't say dirty because the website came out really well. Along with that, we were proud to release the school report card on time again with help from Office of Innovation as well as Public School Accountability. Although we did not have the accountability datasets, but school report card still has 70% of the datasets, which does not depend on accountability. Includes graduation rate, dropouts, retention, school board training hours, and the demographics information, audited my nutrition counts. All those data was published not only on time, but 100 days before the actual report card goes live, which is usually April 15th. So those were our big releases for the month of January. Thank you.
That was a lot of information in just one slide. And I would just say that if there's any part of any of these technology tools that you would like to get more information about, we can focus in on a particular element or even just do trainings with individuals as far as, you know, helping you to really navigate through with MySchoolInfo, you know, what all information can be accessed where. And so this team has just done a great job with all of that. And so I'll pause to see if you have a question, but just know we can always really dig in and help you get more specific information if you need it.
Ivy, if I could just jump in, the statewide community resources portal, that may have been one of the biggest news, newsworthy things that we've launched in some time just from the response that we received. I know Missy Wally got a number of opportunities to talk about that. TV stations all jumped on it, had good statewide coverage. And through that coverage, we were able to expand the number of resources that are now listed in that portal. So anyway, it's a great tool and I just want to, all these are great tools. That one just really stood out, though, was something the public had a great interest in.
Do we have any data on how much it's being utilized by the public or any way to collect that?
For each of those applications, we do have Google Analytics working at the background from school report card to statewide community resources. We usually give a month to see how the data really travels, you know. But yeah, we have from which devices people are coming, from which regions people are coming. All those, yes, we do capture that.
Do we have any preliminary information on the community resources? How well it's being received as far as the general public using it?
I'll be happy to share some stats, definitely. I haven't looked at the latest stats, but I can definitely share the numbers with the board. I'll be happy to move them to you.
Okay, the next slide, and these are events that went on in January. But Don's team did a great job with providing information. And, you know, as he shared a lot of the trainings that they've done in the past, his team has done a good job of really connecting with our co-op and technology coordinators and in our school. But a couple of these that I thought were really good, you know, because we know how important data privacy and just the awareness and understanding of all of the dangers out there. So, and I really particularly like the educator perspective and the student perspective on these. And I think it shows that we're recognizing we're not just providing information in a vacuum, but, you know, there are some very specific things for teachers and for students. So want to commend them for, you know, being so focused in the type of training that they're providing. Okay. And the Educators Rising, I think Ms. Saraceni is still on here. And I know that we've talked about Educators Rising before and the benefit that we have from that curriculum that's provided, that beginning teacher credential and how it's being used to help grow our own teachers for the future. But we have actually gotten some support from the Walton Family Foundation in a grant. So Carly, you want to talk just for a minute about that?
Yes, I'd love to. We had the opportunity to collaborate with Ed Rising to receive the Walton Foundation grant to serve Arkansas students. And, you know, Educator Rising is that organization focused on ending teacher shortage and diversifying the profession through these Grow Your Own programs. And so this grant provides us opportunities for students, but also opportunities for districts and teachers to provide curriculum and professional development. So we're going to be providing curriculum for coursework to 13 districts through mini-grants and providing professional development for those instructors. And through those 13 mini-grants to those districts, we're also providing student memberships into organizations where they can go to regional events, starting at the end of March and going into April, and compete. And we're really excited because we have actually partnered with higher ed and our educator, education cooperatives. And we're really excited because UAPB, UCA, Henderson State, and Philander Smith have all partnered with us to host one of those events along with Guy Fenter and Crowley's Ridge Co-op. So we're just really excited about this because students can. and Crowley's Ridge Co-ops. So we're just really excited about this because students can um virtually participate and compete or attend sessions in these regional events. So we're really excited about it.
And this is really giving students that opportunity to get some firsthand experiences, um kind of a work-based learning approach um early on, um not just even with education within their school district, but they get to participate with students um across the state and in other states as well, I think. So. Okay, and Secretary Keith, we can go the last one and then come back to this one. I think um there was going to be some announcements. So but just mentioning, you know, kind of that um um experience with the real workplace. Um this is something that um has been an important part of work with um career ed this year, a focus um to really um update and transform our work-based learning opportunities for students. And um our students in career education can um get an opportunity for sustained interactions with industry or community um professionals. So um if a district is is using work-based learning, um students are supervised and the the type of experiences that they're having or the projects that they complete. But what's really important is to make sure that that all can be captured. So um uh Career Ed is working on updating the platform where the um um the the coordinators can um keep all of that information. It gives our division a lot uh better understanding of the types of experiences and um the number of credits that students are actually earning with work-based learning experiences. So um if you all want some additional information about this component of um C T E, I know that Dutch Kramer's and her team would be happy to um provide you with a presentation in the future. Okay, so if we can go back to the Love Teaching Week, which is going to be next week, I'm not sure if um Carly or if Joel or if we had somebody else that was going to talk a little bit about this, but there um it's it's set up to be um a really neat time and opportunity for lots of people to get to share about teaching. So. Anybody want to jump in on this?
Sure, I will. Um and you know, this is really uh I I'm really excited about this because it is uh just a it's largely a social media campaign uh that was started back in twenty fifteen. Uh and it it really is is nationwide. So it it's pretty cool to see uh this come together. But uh the the whole idea is that uh the focus is on illuminating uh why teachers are they get into the profession and why they remain, which because a lot of times the the focus is on the challenges of the profession. And so this is, this kind of brings to light those uh, you know, those reasons why. And I, that's why I'm so excited. So it is largely a social media campaign with the hashtag love teaching. Uh but we we've also been able to to put together, although weather's going to uh wreak havoc on this. But we've had sponsors in different places that are going to sponsor like a a teacher's lounge takeover and provide lunch for three different schools next week. Uh so that's been fun to put together, although we're probably postponing to the following week. Uh but it'll be good whenever we get to do it. So um yeah, some of those things are are coming up and we're excited.
So that's just a snapshot of um some of the latest work that's going on. And um I just, I know uh Ms. Smith would echo, we're proud of our group here. And um you know, they 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 do a lot of work right now in supporting schools and and districts and helping them get through COVID. But at the same time, also being visionary and looking ahead at um things that we want to continue doing so that um we can keep moving forward with um the goals that we have. So um I I appreciate it. And again, anytime you all want more information about something we're sharing, please let us know. And we'll be happy to put together additional uh reports for you.
We'll pause there and see if there are any questions on any of those items. All right. And if none, then uh I'm going to switch over uh and talk about ESER two and GEAR two. I've switched my screen to a different uh document. Have, do y'all see the new document says ESER two, GEAR two funding at the top? No? Okay, let me, let me stop, share, and then I'll share again. Okay, how about now? All right. So as you all know, uh in December, Congress uh passed a a uh budget resolution that added funds. It was a supplemental appropriation uh as far as the ESER and the GEAR funding that came from the original CARES Act. So Arkansas uh received over five hundred and fifty million dollars for distribution in the ESER two program. Uh over five hundred million dollars of that goes uh to the school districts, again distributed by the Title One formula. And uh that, the the states had an opportunity for up to ten percent set aside. So uh fifty-five point eight million dollars is what Arkansas could set aside uh for uh specific purposes. And um Greg Rogers and I went to the uh Joint Budget Committee and uh it's talked about our plan and and asked for the appropriation to be released, which uh the committee did. But here are the the big buckets that we're looking at. Uh the first being four point six million dollars for COVID emergency leave. Y'all will remember, um we had funding from the CARES Act uh to s- to uh assist in uh making sure teachers that had to be quarantined uh or were positive and it could not go, come to work uh could, you know, receive some type of uh protection against using their own uh leave days. And so up to ten days of COVID emergency leave was approved. Through December eighteenth, uh we had right at fifteen million dollars that was expended and uh which was a total amount allocated. And uh districts actually submitted another four point six million in claims uh that uh we use this money to meet those claims. So all of the emergency leave from last semester has been met. And uh districts are uh can use their uh money, their ESER one or ESER two money uh to continue some type of COVID emergency leave. And we know a number of districts have done just that. Uh mental health and behavioral support, allocating up to twelve million dollars uh to build on the uh and create a mental health and behavioral health model. We would learn from the Aware Grant and then build on that uh so that we could help districts to deal with uh the the just, mental health was an issue that we were working on prior to COVID. It's been exacerbated in the time since last spring, and and this is something that we are working to create supports for districts uh in that area. And also uh counselors uh directly uh, you know, hearing from counselors, understanding some of the things they are dealing with uh specifically around depression, anxiety and grief. Um the the results of the pandemic will, going to have long-term effects that we just really don't know at this point. Uh but we're looking at developing supports for our uh school counselors. And um I'll pause to see if Stacy uh or Ivy, the one want to add anything to that.
No, you 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 did a great job. I do think this idea of this, of creating this statewide model for mental and behavioral health is is super important for our state. We really do not have a statewide um behavior model. Um we've done lots of work with the God for Life and with the Arkansas Where Grant. Um and those were like initiatives that, you know, has some tractions and pockets. But be be able to create an actual statewide model um and provide direct support to our schools, I think is going to be something that is that is needed. So um I appreciate everyone's commitment to to making that happen.
Thank you, Stacy. Uh the next bucket is addressing the unmet student needs and learning gaps. Uh one of the areas that we'll be looking there is uh in early childhood partnering and building on our partnership with Arkansas PBS that was so successful uh last spring and and into the summer and working with the Division of Childcare and Early Childhood Education uh for statewide pre-K curriculum and support. And in specifically uh looking at the statewide kindergarten readiness assessment uh that um you know, we, one that i- is is stronger um up to date and uh resources for that that would be for for A B C and pre-K in general. Uh Rise Arkansas, uh we want to, you know, we have, we haven't stopped with Rise Arkansas, but we have lost some momentum. Uh but we think it's very important that we uh begin another push uh because of the importance of Rise and looking at creating that network of certified uh ac- certified academic language therapists, CALTS, uh for dyslexia around the state with a goal of uh of having five hundred around the state. And that's a very ambitious goal, but uh we believe that we can make that happen and uh using some of these funds to to support that work. Also expanding our offering of C T E uh courses, digital courses, uh and specifically those courses that can lead to industry-recognized credentials, uh very important to to make sure that that work keeps going, building on partnerships that have already been initiated. A- and then one thing to keep in mind with these funds is that they, the lifespan of this, of these funds is a little longer than ESER one. Uh we have until September thirtieth of twenty twenty-three uh to obligate these funds. And we would look to uh acknowledge there may be future needs that some districts would have and setting aside some funds to meet those future needs of of things that we just can't foresee at this time. The next big bucket is teaching academies, up to five million dollars there, where we would focus on teacher academies uh in special education, partnering with higher education institutions uh to uh to to grow our uh our capacity there in higher education. And we we have started working on an online teaching endorsement, uh but that, we believe that just uh there's an ongoing need for that. We don't believe that uh next year will be quite the same as it relates to online digital learning, but we do think that online and digital learning is here to stay. And we want to support our teachers uh in that effort. So again, I will pause there to see if uh Ivy or Stacy have any comments they want to add. Okay. All right. And then finally, uh for ESER two, a statewide strategy for student engagement and dropout prevention. Uh this is work that we are already doing through Missy Wally and Engage Arkansas. Uh but as we know, we we really only scratched the surface there uh with the number of districts that are participating in that work. We know there are a number of other districts that have students uh that that are falling in these same categories. And uh we we want to use uh some of this funding to help build that capacity uh around the state uh to identify the stu- the students, identify their needs and to uh help them be successful uh as we get ready to, you know, to come in for a landing on this school year and and get ready for next school year. And really identify what are those things that need to happen either uh through extended uh extended support um in the summer uh or after school or before school, whatever those things are that uh might be necessary to help these students be successful. All right. Now jumping over quickly to GEAR, this is the Governor's Emergency Educational Relief Fund. Thirteen point three seven eight million is what uh the allocation for Arkansas. Arkansas School for the Blind and School for the Deaf have a number of uh deferred maintenance issues, especially with H V A C. And because uh heating, air uh ventilation, that is a specific uh, you know, specific language that was added in this last congressional act uh because of the importance of of air circulation for healthy classrooms. Uh we're going to set aside a million dollars uh to help uh upgrade and and repair some of the systems there on those two campuses. Also, uh to develop computer science uh educators for the Computer Science and Computing Initiative, a two and a half million dollars to help uh create, partner with higher ed institutions to create a computer science teaching academy. Uh you know, as as I'll mention in a moment, uh we are continuing to work with the legislature on the governor's desire uh to have a computer science teacher for every school, uh every high school. And this will go to help support that work over the next couple of years. And then the next two, uh the Mental Health Initiative, this is leveraging some of the GEAR funding uh and then pre-K leveraging some of the GEAR funding with the ESER two funding uh to help advance uh that work. So uh we we talked about those. And again, uh because there may be schools that have ex- uh other needs that aren't being met uh because of the way the funding is distributed by the Title One methodology, we have some schools that are simply don't receive a lot under Title One, so they're not receiving a lot under ESER. And uh setting some funds aside to be aware of their needs and and address those needs as appropriate is something else that we're looking at uh with uh with some of the GEAR funding. So I will stop there um and see if there are any questions about ESER two or GEAR two.
Secretary Key, I have a question. When we talk about specifically the mental and the behavioral, and we say like up to, I think it's twelve million, I'm trying to look at my other screen, and five million, is that together or is that the total amount? So like, could we have an initiative up to seventeen million? And we can combine the funds that way? And that's just my ignorance of how the the school funding process works.
It could be between twelve and seventeen. Uh I think we we're looking at, uh you know, these are very preliminary right now. And that's uh what the teams are already starting to do is pull together what uh the actual dollar amounts would need to be uh in creating these partnerships, um you know, purchasing whatever resources need to be purchased. So we tried to leave as much uh flexibility there as we could, uh but um just because of the unknown dollar amounts, it would be necessary.
Sure. Well, I think it's a great, great initiative, and I'm really thankful that we're doing it.
Okay, if there are no other questions, I'll just wrap up um with a brief update on the legislative session. We are about one month in to the legislative session. Uh we have seen some progress uh with our, mainly with our division of higher education bills, a number of those uh dealing with challenge scholarships, uh higher ed transparency have now become law. Uh a number of our major uh DESI initiatives, um for, for example, uh the and the governor's initiatives on the computer science requirement. Uh we have been negotiating and talking with stakeholders uh on different aspects of of that. Uh we feel like we're making good progress and and hope to see that bill moving next week. Then uh our ESA funding, uh we had had that scheduled to run this week in committee, but uh the the weather got us. So um we're, we look forward to getting back next week and having that bill go forward. Uh one of our other uh high, high-profile bills, uh the uh expansion of our uh our coaches, our career coaches, uh we expect that to be moving sometime pretty soon as well. Uh so by next month, uh uh next month's commissioner's report, I hope to have uh a good report that some of these bills have actually become law. Uh the teacher salary increase, the where we're shooting to move the teacher, the average teacher salary in Arkansas. Uh governor's goal of moving that up by two thousand dollars over the next two years. Again, that's uh having a lot of good discussion with uh the Senate and House members on that topic. A good conversation and and developing understanding with uh superintendents of what that does and what it doesn't do. And uh we we hope that uh in another month, we'll have those things either um passed and ma- and into law or almost uh through the process. Uh but if there are any o- any specific uh elements that we want to talk about, I mean, I will say the A to F uh pause, that has become law. Uh so that's probably one of the first uh significant K twelve initiatives uh that has made it to the governor's desk and has been signed. Um but uh if there are any other questions about legislation, I'll be happy to address those uh now, or if you want to talk offline, we can do that as well.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, um Secretary Key for that report and your team. Yes.
I was just waiting to see if anyone had questions for the secretary. Secretary, I just also
Secretary, I just also wanted to ask, you had some promotions too? Is that correct this last month? I thought I saw Mary Claire and Greg and Gina had uh, received some promotions and just wanted to congratulate them.
Well, thank you. And, and those things happen and then uh, the lag time, but that when they get on the uh, the board report, uh, sometimes I forget which one. So uh, yes, um, Mary Claire, uh, we, Jennifer Dedman did leave to take a position over BLR, very good opportunity for her. And uh, Mary Claire was selected to step into that role. So we have a, a legal position that uh, is, is open now. And I think the team is currently um, vetting the, the candidates for that. And uh, yes, uh, as a result of um, transformation, there were some uh, changes that uh, we, we couldn't make because we didn't have positions. And now as, as a different mov- movement has taken place over the last 18 months, uh, and some of these positions have, have become available, uh, yes, Gina and Greg both uh, were promoted uh, in the office of the secretary. And so um, we are very happy uh, that we could do that and we congratulate them on uh, on their new roles. Or not really new roles, but just really uh, more reflective of uh, of the work they were doing. So I, I'll put it that way.
We require a lot of help, so we just wanted to make sure they felt appreciated.
Yeah. So Madam Chair, uh, if there are no other questions, that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, if there is no other business, then we have any more questions, comments or discussion for anything? Okay. Then thank you so much for your time today. Uh, it was good to see you all. I hope you all stay safe and we are adjourned. Have a good week.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.